Good evening and welcome to the January 18th, 2022 meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, the Dover School Committee, and the Sherburne School Committee. My name is Kate Potter. I am standing in tonight for Nancy Cordell, and I call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before I read the public comment preamble, can you please raise your hand if you are here to make a public comment?
Kate, I'm not seeing anyone with a raised hand at this time.
Sarah, I'm not either. We'll give it a minute. All right. Then seeing none. Before we move on to our agenda, I would like to begin our meeting by formally recognizing and congratulating Beth McCoy, our current Assistant Superintendent, who will be our new Superintendent come July 1st. Beth, we are thrilled to have you move into this new role and to continue our important work together. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, and to everyone who worked so hard on that.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'm very excited and honored.
As are we. All right, um, let's move to the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent reports, please.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair, and again, I am so pleased in your selection of Elizabeth Beth McCoy. You can imagine the transition probably started immediately in talking about her taking over this role. So we have a lot of work ahead of us and we'll be sharing that with you as we go along. I'd also like to request this evening, we have again, as we have committed to every one of our joint meetings to have Sarah McAllister here from NYU to do a report on our equity audits. So I'd like to take that out of order. I'm sure Sarah has lots of things happening this evening and we have a long agenda, so I'd like her to be able to go first.
Absolutely.
Sarah?
Thanks so much. Good evening and thank you for having me and congratulations, Beth. I just want to share a brief update on response rates from the fall mini survey that we conducted last month and into the beginning of this month and then our plans for sharing data with the advisory board. If I have permission, I'll share just one PowerPoint slide. Let me see if I can do this. Great. Okay, um, so this is our current response rate from the fall mini survey, which turned out to be not such a mini survey, but we're very, very pleased at how many responses we got, and I want to just appreciate that I know people took this very seriously and that it was, you know, quite a heavy lift on the part of school and district staff to get this high response rate, and we really appreciate all the work and attention that went into this. Um, so as of today, we have 136 responses from teachers and staff, 420 responses from parents and caregivers, 1,230 responses from students, and you can see the breakdown across the school levels there. And we're really, really pleased. This is a lot of data for us to work with and so far, the demographics of survey respondents closely reflect the district demographics. The one notable exception was a pretty substantial minority of parents and caregivers, I think around 28% declined to select a race or ethnicity category. But otherwise, you know, what we see in our survey is pretty close to the DESI's report of demographics for the district. We think the final response rate will change a little bit here. There's some cleaning still to be done. You know, some people didn't check a school, and then when we look at their open-ended responses, they identify a school, so we think we'll be able to add a few more people to each of these categories. We're really pleased that respondents made very thorough use of the open-ended response option, so we have a lot of qualitative data from the survey as well as the numbers. We're finishing our cleaning right now. And in advance of our next advisory board meeting, which is February 9th, we plan to share some averages disaggregated by subgroup with the advisory committee so that we can look for some patterns. We'll also share our initial analysis of the open-ended survey response items as well as the detailed analysis of the focus group data. Since I last spoke with you, we've conducted three more focus groups. Those were with Metco students at the middle school and high school as well as Metco parent and caregiver, so we're pleased to include that data. I think the themes that I shared last time are still true from our analysis of the focus groups. You know, our closer analysis is bearing out those themes. I think what really comes through is just the commitment of everyone in the community to getting this work right. So we're really pleased to have this huge body of data to be working with. And I anticipate at the next meeting, we'll be able to have some advisory board members join us to share some reflections from their analysis of the data. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, and if I may just add, I so appreciate all of the work that you and your team are doing. You come to these meetings every time with updates on numbers and progress you're making on identifying themes. And I would say that, you know, many of us were concerned from the beginning on how we are going to find the bandwidth while dealing with COVID to support your work, but your team is amazing. You find out, you find who the contact person is in the district and you just go to them and get the work done, and then you show up with the results. So I'm excited for all that you've done and I appreciate you just digging in and becoming part of the team, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Does anyone have questions? Dennis?
The response rate looks great. Is that consistent with what you've seen through similar exercises, higher, lower?
This is actually the first of this type of survey that we've conducted, and I'd say we were surprised at how robust the response rate was. You know, this was initially sort of imagined as a way for people who had intended to participate in focus groups but weren't included to share their responses, and then we were able to add some sort of validated questions around school climate from existing surveys and make it sort of more of a robust survey. And so given that we didn't do a ton of planning around role at an outreach, I think we're quite pleased at this response rate. It's higher than I would have expected, especially from students, and you know, I think that's because a lot of work went in to, at the schools, to making sure that this got done. But, you know, I think the fact that the responses very closely parallel the district demographics, I think means that, you know, this is a pretty representative sample, so we're pleased there.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Are we, do any of the focus groups, do they include former students and families?
Yeah, so we have planned to do interviews with families who have left the district, and so we're in the process of planning those right now. Our team has also talked about potentially in the spring, thinking about some data collection with alumni of the district, and I think their voices are super important. We have some alumni representation on the advisory committee, but we've been thinking about ways to just capture sort of a broader swath of alumni reflections as well, if that's feasible within, you know, our resources and time.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Sarah? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll continue. So it's certainly no secret to anybody that we continue to deal with challenges around COVID, around changing protocols. I don't think there's a day that goes by in this district that there isn't a Zoom call with the Commissioner or a new update. We're continually trying to share that information, obviously, with our school committee, with our parents and our community. Before I start on this presentation though, again, I want to thank everybody because people have certainly come forward. They have done what we've asked them to do. Parents have made sure that they're checking their children before they go out every day to make sure that they're healthy and able to attend to school, and if not, to take part in some of our symptomatic testings that I'll share with you this evening. I also did see before I begin, Dr. Matt Vitale is here this evening, so as I present some of the information in the ever-changing landscape, please know that we meet on a very regular basis with our health and hygiene advisory, and they have been instrumental in keeping us as safe as possible in school. So I want to start again with a similar presentation to what we did last week for our staff and our families. And I'm going to ask the presentation to be shared. So the goals have continued in the district to prioritize the health and safety of all our students and staff. Our overreaching goal has always been to keep our teachers, support staff, and students in school for in-person learning. We continue to work with and follow the recommendations of our Boards of Health, DESI, DPH, and CDC. And we're developing metrics and continuously review data. We revise school operating protocols as warranted. Next, please. And I do want people, because I know people are paying attention to this, last week I was very excited to present to you that our high school had a 94% vaccination rate. There was some confusion with some of the staff and with high school students. It made that number rise. So with confidence today, I will tell you, this is, and this is a lot of work on the part of our nurse leader Jill Fidor and her staff in continuing going to state databases or information from our staff members to continue to try to adjust this. We do not have the booster rates in yet, and I will address that before the end of this meeting. So for our staff, we have 99% vaccinated across all four schools. And vaccinated again is two doses of Moderna, Pfizer, or one of the J&amp;J. That's what we're considering, fully vaccinated. At Chicaring, and when you think of the short time that we've allowed our five to 11-year-olds, and you can see the numbers right there, 72% are fully vaccinated at Chicaring and plus 30 are partially vaccinated, probably on the way to becoming fully vaccinated. At Pine Hill, 79%, 19 partially vaccinated. At our middle school, you know, having reached that 80% and going over that, reaching 86% at this point for our students, 21 partially vaccinated. And at our high school, that continues to climb, 90% of our students are fully vaccinated, 37 are partially vaccinated. So there aren't many districts that look like Dover Sherburne. Again, it is probably one of the strongest mitigation strategies we have against serious symptoms of our COVID pandemic. So next slide, please. Guidelines changed right when we came back to school. We worked all during our school vacation, making sure we understood these guidelines, provided opportunities for our staff, where we had rapid antigen tests that we gave out over vacation. But these are some of the current CDC guidelines, and these were changes. Close contacts are able to test out of quarantine on day five using the PCR-preferred or rapid antigen test, and home kits were acceptable. Any individual who tests positive must isolate for five days, may return on day six if symptoms have improved, and masking is required for an additional five days. People asked about masks. Masks may be removed only while eating or drinking during designated times. And what I've said was, you have to be actively eating or drinking, not sitting around gabbing with friends, all those things we so enjoy, and yet it's become, again, a mitigation strategy that's very important in the school setting. We do have some of our little individuals, you know, some of our preschoolers and other students who are unable to comply with consistent mask wearing. So isolation and quarantine may be recommended for the full 10 days during that time. I also want to deviate for a moment and just remind everybody that last week we were notified, I believe midweek, that the Commissioner had decided to extend the mask requirement in schools now through Monday, February 28th, which I believe is the Monday we come back after our February break. And interesting enough, if you have reached that 80% threshold and you have provided your application and your attestation form and have been approved, such as our high school has, that remains under the control, masking or not, of your school district, your school committees, and your local Boards of Health. Next slide, please. So we informed our district last week that pool testing, which had been in place since September at the elementary level only, per our DESI guidelines, vaccinated individuals are not recommended to participate in pool testing. And DESI suggested a pool testing is an only valid mitigation strategy if 80% of the group participates. And due to the high number of recently vaccinated students at both our elementary, Chicaring, and Pine Hill no longer meet this threshold, and you just saw those really very high vaccination rates. So as of last Monday, excuse me, last Friday, January 7th, pool testing was suspended in Dover Sherburne. Next slide, please. What we did in place of this, and I have to tell you that after the information that came out today from the state, I believe the Governor addressed the Commonwealth at about 10:00 AM this morning. And you heard the Governor talk about a new testing program that Dover Sherburne, we did have a chance to talk to our health and advisory today. This is something we're very much going to be interested in, but I want to tell you, I always feel like we are one step ahead of everybody. So last week, when it was very challenging, we made the decision that the biggest bang for our so-called buck to keep our schools safe, to keep our teachers teaching and our students in school, was to really focus on in-school symptomatic testing. And that is very much what the, you know, Governor and the Commissioner are talking about today. So also for test and stay for asymptomatic, unvaccinated, close contacts, for students to remain in school. So test and stay is something that had been associated with our pool testing or positive test results, and we were able to and pretty much have completed that at this point, and I'll be happy to answer questions on that. What we did implement last week, and you'll see some of the numbers in later slides, what we called our drive-through symptomatic testing. And this is for Dover Sherburne students and staff. It is held at our central administration building daily, and we have changed the times on this. We started out with 10 to 12, and we just, and even then, I have to tell you, if more people signed up, we extended it. As a matter of fact, today, I think they had somebody coming at 1:00 PM. So we are doing everything we can to meet the needs of our students and our staff that need that symptomatic testing done when obviously they're experiencing the symptoms. We don't want people coming to school positive. We want to make sure we catch it and begin the isolation or, again, allow the person to know how to treat their symptoms. You do need consent and pre-registration required, and as I said, the earlier for us, the better to be able to allow this in our district, and you'll see the large numbers of people that took advantage of the symptomatic testing. We're also fortunate to have somebody local and a collaborating partner through the Community Mobile Clinic, AFC Urgent Care. They have committed to work with us from last Tuesday through the last week in January. They will be here at this point for three weeks during this current Omicron surge. This is not only for Dover Sherburne residents, families, students, staff, and staff family members, and I also want to add here, because I know the Boards of Health have notified, you know, your residents, that if you also have workers in Dover and Sherburne, for instance, your DPW, your firefighters, your police, your librarians, any of your town employees, they can also, even if they live out of Dover and Sherburne, they can take advantage of this mobile clinic. This is held at Linquist Commons. It's going on right this evening, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:30 PM, and an offering on Sundays from 10 to noon. Pre-registration is also required, and individual insurance rates may apply. And that is something that the individual will work with, with AFC. This has been, again, another option, you know, provided to our community to keep us, as we said, our goal to keep us safe and in school for in-person learning. Next slide. These are the results of just one week of, actually, I think through today, so all of last week but including today, Monday. Did we miss a slide here? Okay, let me start with this. So drive-through testing. So we have administered 99 tests, and I hope you enjoyed this photo. So this is, you probably can't tell, this is Kate McCarthy, who again is going to do a presentation to you this evening on student support services. That's her other job, by the way. This right now is her primary job. And Leslie Campbell, who is our interventionist at Chicaring and Pine Hill, has, and is it an EMT background, Leslie? You have been just fabulous, and again, when you talk about multitasking, this is the best picture I can imagine. And that being said, we're fortunate to also have had Jill, one of our nurse substitutes, not to be confused with our nurse leader Jill Fidor, who also was out there one day, I will tell you. But also, our collaborative partners from CIC are now going to be staffing our drive-through testing five days a week. So again, you can just see the progress that we continue to make. As far as the mobile clinic, AFC, 176 tests have been administered and 38 positive test results. So pretty much the percentages are mirroring what we are seeing in the community. The one thing I will ask people is if, for some reason, you take one of the slots by preregistering, which is required. If you are unable to keep that appointment, if something changes, please make sure you go in as soon as possible to take out and cancel that registration so somebody else can take that slot. If you look at, and I think I counted 26 days here. If you look at what has happened in 26 days, and I thought it was interesting when our nurse leader spoke about the numbers we previously had, before I even read these, I want to share with you since the beginning of the year, and think about this. The high school had 103 students that had tested positive for COVID-19. 87 of the number I just read, the 103, have tested positive since the December 23rd. So you can clearly see this surge. At the middle school, 80 students and staff had tested positive for COVID-19, 76 of them since December 23rd. And at our elementaries, and again, remember, this was our unvaccinated population for a long time, 174 students and staff had tested positive, and 131 of those had tested positive since December 23rd. So clearly, we can see the surge. So here, during this timeframe of 26 days, Chicaring has had 86 positive cases, Pine Hill has had 58 positive cases, middle school 83, high school 95, and district encompasses all those not assigned to a particular building, and that number is three. Next slide, please. We do have other mitigation measures that we're doing. And again, caretakers, please be vigilant in assessing the symptoms prior to sending your students to school. We had a link on our presentation where you can go and see the CDC symptom guidelines. I think we got beyond, we kept saying, you know, gee, I think I have a cold or I have a sore throat, you know, being smart and being able to be proactive and find out, you know, just what happened. And I also want to tell people also that we have had people with symptoms come to the drive-through testing, and at that point in time with the rapid antigen test, we're giving them results very quickly, within probably a half hour, if not sooner. And sometimes they test negative, still continue to have the symptoms, and we are advising them to come back in a day or two, and many times they do, and they're testing positive. So to have that five days a week, not just that pool testing happening just one day at Chicaring or one day at Pine Hill, to be able to have that symptomatic testing going on in your schools with all of your school nurses, should something happen while our students and staff are in session in school, and to also have the opportunity five days a week, and including now Sunday with AFC for other symptomatic needs. So again, I talked about masks being required, you know, regardless of anybody's vaccination status. And, you know, we talked about this today with health and hygiene. And when you're talking about masks, one of the things you have heard from CDC, and they're talking about the cloth masks not being as effective as the surgical, the KN95 masks, and we are seeing many of our children coming in with the better masks. Certainly, we've been able to provide our staff with additional masks, and we do feel that that's another measure to keep us safe. You know, masks are not required again while eating or outdoors, and our spacing and ventilation, we continue to try to increase it to the best of our ability. I know last week, Dawn Vettori had requests for some air purifiers, and they were right out the door and into, I think, a band area at Chicaring and a couple of other places. So we are trying to be attentive to any of these needs. We decided not to cancel our after-school activities at this time, but we're watching very carefully our drama, our band with our supervision, our social distancing, and again, increased ventilation. And I say this, and if you look at social and emotional and making sure that we are doing the very best we can to keep our kids having an in-school experience and also opportunities for their extracurricular activities. Our winter indoor athletics are continuing at this time, but we are limiting spectator attendance to immediate family members and siblings if there are childcare responsibilities. And we're doing this both for our home and away games, and we again will reassess this within, I think at the time we said, two weeks. We'll continue to see where we're at in the surge before we lessen that. We work with our Tri Valley League members also. John Smith sits on that as a principal with our athletic director Emily Sullivan, and we have great representation and a voice at these meetings. Next slide, please. We changed our daily reporting. Previously, with the very small number of cases, we had the principals reaching out to their school communities to let them know when we had a positive case in the school. It got to the point that we needed it to be district-wide. We're transparent. It is on our website at your WeAreDSCOVID19 link. And every day, at the end of the day, our nurse leader gets the numbers from each of the schools, and we are able to share that district-wide. Contact tracing, which is what this was about today, when the Commissioner and the Governor spoke, you heard them talk about options for schools. So let me talk about contact tracing and then I'll talk about the pivot that we're going to make and accept as a district. So the high positivity rate of 22% makes it impossible to accurately identify a close contact. Last week, we took a student from one of our schools, and it happened to be at a middle school, and we tried to determine by the number of classes they were in close contacts. And for that one student, 70 other students were close contacts. It has become impossible with our bandwidth. And again, we want to put our energies and our so-called manpower into our symptomatic testing in keeping our district safe. Again, parents, please remain vigilant in assessing the symptoms daily. One of the things, and I want to use an example here, we continue to assess for clusters and trends, and we collaborate with DESI and local agencies to react as appropriate. I will tell you, we had, we weren't sure if we were calling it a cluster, but we had a couple of classes at one of our elementary schools. We immediately, after the nurse leader brought it to our attention, we immediately got on the phone with the rapid response line at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. At that time, we spoke through what had happened in the class. We had six positive cases over a little bit more than a week's time. At that point there, it was determined that we should work with our health and hygiene advisory, which we were meeting with that very day. We ended up making a decision rather than to take this class, and it was young students, and putting them in quarantine. What we would do is we would immediately test everybody remaining in the class, including the teacher and the staff members. We decided, and from that, there were two more that tested positive, so that was eight out of about 21. We decided that we would keep the other students in school versus quarantining, and I want to remind everybody that remote learning is not an option. And I want to remind everybody that remote learning is not an option at this point. And what we would do was to test them every day, and that's what we did for two classes, actually. So on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday last week, we tested those classes. There were no more positive cases or clusters or trends, but we continued to pay individual attention to that happening and would be able to do that, uh, you know, throughout the district if these cases, uh, arise. Next slide, please. We held the parent forum, uh, last Monday morning, and we did that in the morning because you had your superintendent, uh, search, uh, going on that evening for a number of your candidates. Um, so again, we normally wouldn't do it at nine A M. We did record it. I know some parents asked about that. We will try to, um, obviously, you know, try to meet their schedules. Next time we do something like this, we probably had about seventy parents uh, on board that took advantage. Um, and again, there were other parents that were able to, during their own time, uh, had a link to the recording to view it. We had a staff forum with over seventy staff members, um, in the afternoon on that same day. I want to thank the Health and Hygiene Advisory, Doctors Beaver, Vitale, uh, Dr. Alexi Boudreaux, Dr. Kate Peterson. Every one of them made an effort to attend one of those sessions and are so helpful in answering, uh, all of the changing guidelines, et cetera, that are happening. So let me talk a little bit about what, um, and again, this is just coming at us, so I'm looking at my papers as I'm speaking to you. So today at eight-thirty, the commissioner addressed us, the governor spoke, as I said, at about ten A M. And what they're offering to districts like Dover Sherborne. And you must be able to continue to do so for us. We're continuing to do our symptomatic testing. So if you are doing your symptomatic testing or pool testing, you qualify to take advantage of a new option that they are giving us. And at this point, we are going to take advantage of this. So this will allow us to really do kind of surveillance testing. To, uh, every two weeks, and they'll be on opposite schedules, we will be able to give out to staff members, um, a kit which has two tests in it. So they can take those kits, this is not mandatory, but we will talk about how we are going to, uh, recommend it is used. Maybe it's used on a Sunday evening before we start school that next Monday to take a rapid antigen test to make sure that you're not testing positive and coming in school. This is also going to be given to every one of our families. So any family that consents for all of our students in, uh, D S will be given a kit with two tests. So for every week, they will have a test to test their youngster to see, and again, is this something that we do on a Monday to start the week? That doesn't take away our symptomatic testing five days a week. It doesn't take away from the nurse's office symptomatic testing. We still have all those supplies and are able to, um, to do this. There is a webinar tomorrow. I, you know, wish I had more information, but Jill Fiedor, uh, and or Kate McCarthy and myself will attend the webinar and understand, uh, applying for this. I think the sooner that you apply or let, uh, Desi know that you want to take part in this, uh, you will, they will be able to order the kits and will be able to be in the queue for this testing. So, um, I know I've shared a lot of information, um, in a short amount of time. So before I go on with, uh, the assistant superintendent and giving some updates there, uh, let me open it, please, for any questions. And please know Dr. Beaver is up. I see Dr. Boudreaux there. So again, it looks like we're, we're well-represented with our health and hygiene and our experts. And if I know I've said this to you every time I've been on, and I say this to them every Tuesday when they spend an hour with us, or when they jump on calls with us at a moment's notice. It has allowed us to do the work that we're doing to understand the pros and cons. And I, I wish, and I know when you're talking about the most important thing to you, your children. I wish I could tell you that there are no risks in any of our schools, but what I will say is there are certainly less risks. We're not a high-risk environment. Even when you see some of those numbers, your kids are safe in our schools. Um, I wish we could protect them so that, that nothing would happen to them. So we've been very, very fortunate uh, to continue school, to be able to work with our parents, and to have the advisory that we have. I see a lot of hands, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. Um, Jeff.
Thank you, Kate, and Kathy, thank you for, for that report. It's very encouraging, the number of vaccinated kids that we have, and I think the approach to having a lot more tests available in the school is, is very helpful. Um, the question that I had, and Kathy and I have exchanged messages on this, and it'd be helpful if maybe one of the doctors on the call responds to this, but in that case that Kathy mentioned of that one particular outbreak in, in one of the classes, um, the decision, at what point will a decision be made to, I know we can't go remote, but to shut the class down for a few days? Um, because in this particular case, almost half the class now has it. So just trying to understand the, I think the problem is we are testing. The tests for Omicron seem to be almost a day or two delayed. Um, and so how are we making sure if four or five kids test positive in a class, at what point do we decide, maybe we should shut this down for a few days to make sure we catch any lags that might be there, um, to keep more people safe?
Kathy, I'm happy to take a stab at that if that's helpful, and I see, and so invite you guys to weigh in as well. You know, I wish I could say, you know, the sort of the perfect thing, and every time we see this, this is how we'll know what to do. I would say for this specific case, sort of all of us put our heads together to say, what do we think makes sense? I think some of the things one might look at is what's the timeframe for those cases? So if you have four or five cases over a week versus four or five cases over a day, that may mean different things. And I think it also sort of becomes a question of, um, what other patterns do you see, and how worried are you that the classroom is that primary transmission environment? I think one of the conversations we've had, just in looking at some differences between Chickering and Pine Hill, is to try to look and think systematically about what are the different activities that may bring more risk? Like, are there differences between lunch or other patterns of, um, kind of the school day that look like they might explain it? So I don't think there's a hard and fast rule to say, well, if it's eight kids or if it's nine kids. I think that we sort of defined it as if anybody's spidey sense is tingling, we need to all talk about it and think about it together to kind of arrive at a shared conclusion, because, um, I think Jill's got a lot of insight into all of the cases. But again, when you see thirty cases in a week, like, that is a huge number of conversations to chase down. And I think in this case, we felt like with the strategy of testing, um, we could mitigate the risk and keep kids in school, which we kind of set our number one priority is safety, and our number two is kids in school, and we felt like testing got us to safety. I think one of the parts that's been hard is that as it relates to testing, up to this point, we've had a lot of pieces where we have a set of rules that come to us from Desi or from, um, the testing programs. And part of what we're trying to think about is how do we develop resilience within the community to do additional testing if we feel like we want to test in ways that aren't necessarily um, within the constraints Desi's provided? So I think that's part of what we're also thinking about for part of health-based orders for addition, additional testing. Um, so that we can kind of make the system more resilient. And I think that if we're able to do that, I'd hope to see us do testing in a, a kind of regular routine way within classrooms anytime we're sort of worried about it. I don't think we're quite, quite there yet. Um, in terms of having a super robust system, although I think that was part of what Jill and that, and their team was able to do. And then sort of at least manage my anxiety. Okay, and Alexi, I don't know if you have more to add?
I, I would just add, uh, one little point about the, the, uh, outbreak in the elementary classroom that when we decided to test everyone, uh, our, our next, um, decision was based on what we found when we tested everyone. And had we tested everyone and found eight more cases the next day, our decision might have been very different, but it's, it, the decision-making is day by day. Um, and involves us putting our heads together and looking at the data, because there aren't any, there aren't any formulas that we can use that are going to tell us for sure that, uh, we're following the right path. We, we, we are using our best judgment as we go.
I think that's a really hard concept, right? Like, we would love to know, um, here's a number, and this is what it means. But I think, what I think Matt, Kay, were saying is understanding where the transmission is happening is much more important than a knee-jerk reaction to a number. Right? And, and that's really what we're trying to get at. Um, are these household transmissions? Are these happening in the cafeteria? Are they happening? Um, where, where is it happening so that we can respond more appropriately? I think for many of us, we're like, well, you know, why don't we close extracurricular activities? But if we're not really seeing transmission there, is that just making us feel better? Or are we actually getting to a crux of a problem? And, and, and that's why you're hearing us saying we have to look at each situation really carefully to understand root causes and not, um, have knee-jerk reactions.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I know, I know it's a very difficult, and each situation is different. I think in this particular case, uh, shutting down that classroom for a few days, hindsight's twenty-twenty, um, probably would have been a better decision, um, but I understand the, the parameters that we're, that we're working under. I just think that if there is a number of cases, even if it's dragged out a few days, even more so reason, I think, to, to pull the brakes on a class, because that's something that's showing that the test is not popping up positive the next day. Um, there, there is space now in between when somebody is contagious and when positive cases are showing up. So I think the, seems like what you guys are saying, we need to follow each case, but I also think, as you guys know, the science is changing. Um, so this is a very dynamic situation. Um, so I think you guys are doing a really good job, but I think there should be some protocol or place if there is X amount of cases happening, um, that we do consider closing the class for a day or two.
Thank you. I see Liz with your hand up.
Hi, thank you. I just really quickly wanted to say, as somebody who had a minor slash major panic when I heard pool testing was going away, that I am beyond proud and amazed at what you guys were able to pull together in that window of time, that once I got to speak to you all, it calmed my nerves and made me feel like we're gonna be okay. And I just want to thank you so much. I feel very privileged that myself and my family are in your care. Thank you for all the amazingly difficult work you're doing.
Thank you, Liz. Amanda.
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, I would, I would echo Liz's things. I was able to watch the recording of the parent forum, and I found it really comforting, and I was just, I was struck, um, by the compassion and the clarity with which things were presented, and I, I felt very, um, very real, as relieved as one can feel, I think, at this moment, um, and grateful to this extraordinary team. Um, I had two questions that are very small. The first is, if, um, people have questions after testing with A F C, is there a phone number that we can post where people can make a call? We had, um, trouble getting access to a test result last week. Um, we were sent an email that said, call the phone number. There was no phone number in the email. Um, and I think this is an A F C communication issue, not a district issue, but it would be really helpful if there was a phone number somewhere on the website that people could call, um, so that they can get that information and, um, and proceed, you know, accordingly, depending on what those results are. Um, the other question I had, I think, is primarily a question for the, the secondary level building leaders. Um, I know that the little ones have a lot of outside time, which is great. Um, even though it's cold outside, it gives them a chance to have a break, to take the masks off, um, to sort of be kids. And I'm curious about the extent to which, um, we might build in some of that time for our middle and high school students if they have the opportunity to eat lunch outside or just take a break, um, at regular intervals, um, to help them stay safe and, um, and breathe without a mask during the day. Um, so those are my, those are my questions. Thank you.
Dawn, do you want to answer the question, or Kate, about A F C?
Yeah, I could tackle the first one if you want. Um, we can definitely ask them about communication, but it's actually been, a lot of people have been reaching out to me just because I'm kind of the testing lady. But it's been working out because it's like a streamlined person that's contacting, um, the people to get some, and so we just send them their information, and A F C reaches out with some results. It happened today too, because the, uh, window in which A F C was accepting sign-ups closed at ten today, we think, um, in order to prepare for tonight. And so we were fielding some of those too. So we can even put out a communication that sending their questions to us might be the best way to get the answers from A F C. I don't know, Dawn, if you had other.
Yes, we're trying this today. We, because we added spots, um, to accommodate, uh, the no-show ratio. Um, people, we realized that, uh, I think people realized that the window had actually shut down. He didn't realize it before because the spots were all gone. Um, and so we're gonna try to find a way to streamline that so you don't have to reach out to Kate or I. Uh, so I already started putting the, um, questions to A F C about how we can accommodate those last-minute requests, because there's probably the more urgent test too, the last-minute ones after the windows are closed. So we were able to probably get another twelve or fifteen people in testing today by just relaying the information to them. But that becomes a task in itself too. So we'll streamline that, and we'll definitely see what they think is best about follow-up questions, um, after the fact.
Yeah, and this happened to be, uh, we would, had gone into the weekend, so I didn't, I definitely didn't want to bother you, Kate, and I, um, uh, and we still, we needed the information still. So it, it ended up working out, but it was a little bit of a struggle to find someone to talk to.
Kathy, you're on mute.
I see Dr. Tiano and Principal Smith on here. Do you want to take the question about outdoor, uh, opportunities for your kids?
Uh, yes, certainly. So Amanda, we're fortunate, can you hear me? Yeah, so we're fortunate, um, a silver lining of having a campus in this particular case is it does in fact allow our students to go outside as they change classes. Not only for going into Lindquist or the Science Building, but technically, they can actually go outside if they were in the phys ed area, go around the front of the building and then come back in through to go to mathematics. So they have that option. We obviously have the break. We have, um, separated and created more, uh, mitigation ventilation for the cafeteria. During lunch, we've also opened up the auditorium. We've opened up, uh, the gymnasium, and we've got increased circulation there. So we've been pretty fortunate through all of this, that at the high school level, our students have been able to have basically a mass break at the end of every single period because they can come and go, uh, from class to class.
I would say similar things as Mr. Smith just indicated here at the middle school. Um, our students do have opportunities going back and forth from lunch as well as to the gymnasium and back. Our teachers are still mindful in terms of, uh, mask breaks for students. You'll see if you drive by the school, you may see them outside, uh, the front office here, or, um, if you drive behind or between the schools, you'll see them on that back lawn or taking the long walk back from class. Um, up, up and around. So our teachers are still taking advantage of those opportunities. And students do have opportunities between, uh, lunch, P E, and so forth.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I see Maggie Sanda.
Hi, um, I have a couple things, and then I think the question I came with may have been answered by Kate just now, so you can let me know if that's correct. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the people in the community regarding getting their children vaccinated, because this is just a huge accomplishment, and I think that it's really the path that we have forward as a community to, to being able to kind of go back to the best amount of normal life. Um, I'm hugely grateful to hear this update on the testing plans, and I know I've received a lot of feedback from parents and, um, you know, parents of kids who go to private school, uh, people with elderly relatives, like, people are so unbelievably grateful for this, these testing opportunities, both the symptomatic and the A F C testing. So I just want to, you know, relay that there's just an immense amount of gratitude out in the community about that. Um, and, you know, just regarding the extracurricular activities issue, which I know comes up, and, um, I just wanted to weigh in that, um, I, I, and I know a lot of other families are deeply, deeply grateful that we have kept those extracurriculars, the sports, um, the, you know, drama and all the stuff cooking, um, for as long as we have. I, I think there's an, a huge temptation to shut that down, because it feels like, you know, we're really narrowing in on school, and, um, I think there's two reasons why I would hope and pray that we do not unless we absolutely have to. One is that, um, you know, those activities are really what matter. One is that, you know, those activities are really what matters to so many high school kids, particularly and probably middle school kids too. Without those activities, you know, that's where I've observed a pretty high level of anxiety and depression cooking up with kids, because for so many older kids, that's the reason why they go to school. But secondly, the unintended consequence of that is that those children have inordinate amounts of free time. And they spend it going over to each other's houses and nobody wears a mask. And you know, I'm speaking as a parent, I want to tell you I can control this. And like, it just doesn't happen. They, they do it. And so I think that as far as you know, keeping them in these activities where there's, you know, masking happening and it's organized is the best route to keeping the teenagers from spreading COVID all over town. And then my question is, oh, also the parent forum, I watched it on tape. It was awesome. Thank you so much. If people haven't had a chance to see it, go see it. Thank you for all the time, Dawn, Kathy, but like all the health people. I had a resident who called today because they were stuck trying to and also received an email on Facebook, I think from Amy Tahani. Trying to get into that testing this afternoon. It looked like there were slots, but it was locked out. Is that because of what you guys were just describing?
Yes, we hope to have more details about that, what to do when you're signing up and it's closed. With the drive up, we don't have that issue because it's not, no insurance involved. You sign up. We're really here all day, even if you've just signed up and five minutes later you show up. So it's a little bit of a different process. So we can help verify that.
Yeah, no, the question I got was from a retiree in my neighborhood and then just a Facebook conversation that was another person, I think, out of council on aging. So just anything we can do to even share that information with them. I know for council on aging, you know, a lot of those folks are not super computer savvy and are really depending on this and super like sort of managing symptoms and anxiety and all that stuff. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Maggie. And I just quickly before I call on you, Sarah, I have to say I, I echo everything you said, but especially the after school and sports and other activities. Having a middle schooler and a high schooler myself, they do find a way to one another regardless. And so to be together supervised and hopefully healthy and happy is really really great. I'm glad we're able to do that right now. Sarah.
Well, I have to tell you though, before we go to Sarah, that you can thank Principal Smith, who basically told me, you know, give us the opportunity, we'll make sure the mitigation strategies are in place. Because I will tell you with our health and hygiene advisory, we're a little bit nervous. But you make really good points. I hadn't thought of that, that this is the opportunity for them to be masked and be in structured. So thank you.
And hygiene people, they go in the basement and they play video games and nobody wears a mask. It like, it's bad. It's not good.
And Dr. Tiano, you too, you really kept me, they kept me on pace with this one. So thank you to both of you.
Thank you, everyone, for that. All right, Sarah, thanks for waiting.
Thanks, Kate. Well, I have to echo the thanks that others have given for those who have arranged the additional opportunities for our community to pursue testing. I know that for many, many families that this has filled a real need where testing was scarce and and demand was higher than ever. So thank you so much for that. It's, it's dizzying to say the least, to keep up with some of the changes in guidance. One of the constants for me during this pandemic is the gratitude I have for the physicians and nurses who have been guiding us through our response at every twist and turn. And so I say a huge thank you to Jill and to our health and hygiene advisory folks. You, you are getting us through this. So thank you. As I read the commissioner's announcement today, I, I did, I do confess, I, I, I was again confused. And I'm hoping that perhaps some of our physician friends can, can address that. I understand that the new plan is to provide at home tests for weekly use for schools that will still participate in pooled testing and systematic testing, but who are required under this new plan to discontinue test and stay. So I guess I have a few questions. First, is weekly at home testing redundant when you're also doing pooled testing? Or is the idea that you will time it such that, you know, it's spaced out a little bit from the pooled test and essentially are getting two surveillance tests in a week as opposed to one? And are we, are, are those home tests going to be provided for vaccinated students as well as, as unvaccinated? Maybe that's another distinction between the the pool testing that we've been doing. And then lastly, I wonder if doing away with test and stay as seems to be required under this new plan would still allow us to follow the type of approach that Kathy discussed with the elementary class that had a number of cases. And, and you decided rather than quarantine to test all of the students and the teacher and then continue to test on a daily basis. That, I mean, that seems to me to be we're deciding to consider all of the students in this class close, close contacts and test and stay them for a, a period of time. So I just I'm all for more, you know, surveillance, but I wonder, are we losing anything in this new plan that we would rather not lose? And I will also say just that the test and stay and identification of close contacts admittedly seems to be a different matter when you're talking about the elementary classes versus the middle and high school classes. And so, you know, is there any wiggle room to treat those differently? A lot of questions.
So medical profession, including Jill Fedor and our doctors, I'm going to take the easy ones. So the easy answer is it does not matter about vaccination status. Every student whose family consents, you know, they could have four students in the family will get a test each week. They'll come in sets in the kit. There are two. So that would cover you for two weeks. So that, that's for everybody. Secondly, we would not continue. We have eliminated pool testing in our district. We are doing symptomatic testing. That is where we're putting our energy. So we would not be going back to pool testing. We would be doing exactly what you said, Sarah. Symptomatic testing, or if we had a cluster or a concern, we would do, consider a test and stay for every one of those students to remain in school.
And I get that, Kathy. I was just, that's why I was surprised looking at the release, because it's it's pretty specific that this is for those schools that still participate in pooled testing and symptomatic testing. And you know, I, I
We read it as we could do the symptomatic testing. And that would keep us being able to apply for this. So I'm reading it just as you are. I'm sorry.
Can I just clarify, in, in completing the application today, you would just have to guarantee that you're doing one of the two?
I would also say it's possible that the state's policy is not always entirely internally consistent or purely rational in every situation. And so you know, for me, the way I kind of think about it is anytime I can get more tests, that feels like a really good choice right now. I think that all of the limitations in a high prevalence environment that we had with pooled testing, we will have with surveillance antigen testing. It's exactly the same issues. But like if every DS family that wants to have tests in their home, can have tests in their home. Oh man, like sign me up right now, as long as it's not taking away from something else. And so that part feels better. For me, the other part that feels better is that this would be accessible across the schools where the pool testing was just benefiting elementary. But I, I don't, I'm wildly enthusiastic to have more tests. I don't know for sure that families doing them on either a set day of the week will be the best strategy to have, but having it available to us as a district so that we can figure it out and tailor it as we kind of go through makes a ton of sense. I think Jeff made an incredibly important point earlier that I just want to kind of circle back to, which is like what our infectious disease lead for my hospital says is, we need to approach COVID with a sense of humility, because we will be wrong in many different ways. And as long as we're sort of open minded and thoughtful and collaborative and ready to be wrong thoughtfully, that's a good position to be in because there's nothing we can do to make sure that we're consistently right. And so I think to Jeff's earlier point, I think that what we try to do on the doctor's side is to make ourselves available to work with the district. And I can say, kind of wearing my Pine Hill parent hat, like I'm so proud to be part of this district where we watch both community members who've both been taken up on their offers and other community members who haven't, have stepped in and offered what they have access to and how they can help. And then the district has just done yeoman's work in terms of implementing this rapidly changing policy and, you know, dealing with all the kind of totally understandable feelings we have. Like, I just feel like we need like a you know, something more than a applause to just how much our, our district leaders and our district kind of help partners is there talking to all these families who are having like a really intense emotional thing about like my kid was COVID. And like, that's a lot of those conversations to have and a lot to navigate. And so for me, that's the other part I just want to flag is incredible work that's being done often in the background.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So back to the, you know, I agree with you, I agree with you about all of that, Matt, and especially about the work that's being done by our district leaders. And also about the piece of, you know, more testing equals better. And so that, that brings me back to this idea of discontinuing test and stay and whether that piece of this new program being ruled out still gives us the option to kind of check for outbreaks if we're seeing multiple cases coming up in the class in the way that Kathy described.
So I can try to answer that question, Sarah. I agree that the memo today from the commissioner was not very clear. But the way that I read it was that he was suggesting that contact tracing go away, right? And in, with that, the test and stay program essentially goes away, right? Because we're not identifying the close contacts. So we don't technically have a test and stay program anymore. That being said, when we called the rapid response line last week with regards to this situation at Chickering, we said back to them, you know, what are our options? They shared with us what they, you know, a couple of things. You can, you can talk to your boards of health and think about quarantining the classroom. We said, can we use the supplies that we have for testing and test everybody in the classroom? They said, that's fine. So they're giving us a little bit of leeway with the kits that we have, but we're just not formally calling it. We're not formally saying we have students or staff in a test and stay program each week. We have the luxury of doing kind of surveillance with a whole classroom if we feel like that's necessary, but it's not technically named test and stay anymore.
And in that instance, if you have concerns about a class, I assume that consent is still required by the parents. So in the, in the class that you had, it sounds like everybody consented, but what happens if there are a number of students whose parents have not or will not provide consent in that scenario?
So thankfully, we haven't come across that yet and people have been very forthcoming with providing consent if we already, if we didn't already have it on file. They want their kids to stay in school as well. And so, like I said, we haven't had that problem. We'll continue to work with families and, and recommend that this is a way to keep their children in school, but if they refuse or, or decline because of another reason that we can't come to an agreement on, then we would suggest then that, that the child quarantine, if they are, we would, I would look, is that child really a close contact of what's going on in the classroom? And if they are, then, and unvaccinated, again, going through all of the little steps on the ladder and then come to a decision on what that child should do. Whether it's testing on the parent's end that they want to provide or quarantining at home. But again, it just speaks to like legitimately looking at every single case when it comes in because the protocols and the guidelines have changed so much that it, this is what Desi has been at, is, is asking us to do essentially now is to be looking at every single case and and making a plan from there, which I feel good about because we have plenty of people and plenty of eyes on, on what's going on to help come to those decisions.
And Sarah, just to let you know, that was a discussion. I mean, we right away, when we went into that classroom, I was so pleased when everyone had consented because that was a part of the discussion. You know, to work with the parents, to guide them and to obviously make the best decision that we could, you know, for that child.
Thank you. I mean, I, I take some comfort that it sounds like you view this new program as an expansion of our options rather than contracting our options. And that's not necessarily how I read it at first. So thank you for, for your clarifying on that.
I, I think the other piece I just answered, both boards of health have also, I think, made requests for ARPA funds for additional antigen testing with goals of providing another kind of chunk to support the schools if we do have particular transmission patterns that we're worried about an outbreak, whether that's a classroom or an extracurricular, I think our hope is to get more flexible testing that we can do in a kind of, a kind of denser chunk to a bigger area that's sort of agnostic to whether or not people are vaccinated.
Maggie.
I, I think to Sarah's point, the other thing that maybe, like, maybe I'm not seeing it right, but my understanding is test and stay only applies to unvaccinated people. So as the, you know, tilt goes to like 80% of the kids at Chickering are vaccinated, they're not going to even be eligible for test and stay. So, you know, like, to me, there's a very limited amount of people, like the state's like, oh, your kid's vaccinated. They don't even need to quarantine or anything. So I am so much more in favor as we're moving to these high, high vaccination rates. The state isn't going to support DS with giving us tests for those kind of programs. I'd rather do it this way and anything that the boards of health can do to get additional tests so that when we see an issue, they can target it towards the issue rather than like, you know, if there's 20 kids in the elementary classroom and 16 of them are vaccinated, that's just four kids that would be doing tests and say anyway.
Thank you, Maggie. Do I see any other questions before I turn it back over, over to Superintendent Smith?
All right, thank you. And at this point here, I'm going to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Beth McGoyd.
Thank you. So I just have a few additional slides that I will share with you in regards to teaching and learning through all of these absences. Just please give me a moment. So the first slide is a snapshot of our WE RDS COVID website. So as Superintendent Smith referenced a number of times in her presentation, this website still exists. If you go to the main Dover Sherburne website, there are big letters, click here for the WE RDS COVID website. You click and you can get to, get to here. On this website, you know, front and center is, you know, where to learn more about the testing programs that we're offering in Dover Sherburne, as well as links to register for both the drive through and the AFC programs. And then, you know, there's obviously links to the data. We've been maintaining graphs thanks to Jill and Dr. Vitale in terms of the numbers and the cases throughout the district. So please keep this in mind as a resource. Lastly, in terms of academics, clearly we want our students to continue to learn and make progress with the curriculum. That said, this is not the time to stress students out for either needing to be home because they're ill or needing to quarantine. So I really commend our principals at all four schools and their teachers for prioritizing the social, emotional health and the physical health of their students and saying, get well first, take care of yourself. We will prioritize the assignments that you need to do if and when you're ready to do it or when you come back. But take care of yourself and the rest will come later. So as Superintendent Smith mentioned, remote learning or zooming into classes are not options at this time. And so that being said, students who are missing school at the elementary level, again, need to make sure that they're taking care of their health and getting better and being encouraged parents to provide access for students to read books. You know, read on the iPads. You know, maybe do some math flashcards, do some math games if students are able. When students return to school, teachers will help them make up the work that was missed. And thanks to our workshop model and the many interventionists we have in place, students will have small group intervention time to catch up on anything they need. At the middle school level, there was an email that went out, thanks to Dr. Tiano and Ms. Hurley reassuring students and parents. Again, if you miss assignments, you're not going to be held responsible for every single one. Your teachers will work with you, your guidance councils will work with you to make sure you do what you need to do when you are ready and able. And at the high school level, in the spirit of challenge success, Mr. Smith and his team canceled the official midterms that were supposed to happen this week and are using this as an opportunity for students and teachers to connect, get extra help, do make up work, whatever needs to happen in order for students to feel like they are making progress with the curriculum that they may have missed. You know, as we move away from traditional exams all the time and offer alternate assessments, there are opportunities for students to do presentations and projects at the midterm point. And so any of those that were pre-scheduled will continue. But again, there's great flexibility in when and where that could happen. And lastly, you know, at all four levels, excuse me, all four schools, we can't reiterate enough that we care about our kids. We want to make sure they're healthy and we will do whatever we need to do to support them upon their return to school. That said, I know that our four principals are on here. So if Dr. Brown, Dr. Reinemann, Dr. Tiano, Mr. Smith would like to add anything, I welcome you to do so. That must mean I covered it. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone's hands.
Or if there are questions from the committee?
Well, I, I would like to say to, to all of the building leaders that I'm, I'm grateful as a school committee member and as a parent of a high schooler who missed almost a full week out with COVID and a middle school student and many, 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 many friends of, of ours and kids who have missed a lot of school, but this was a huge relief. And thank you for always putting our kids first.
Okay. I know we have a busy evening, so again, let me move on to a presentation by our Director of Student Support Services, Kate McCarthy. And again, she's going to do quite a presentation this evening. I see her whole team on here. But I can't thank you enough for the time that you have given to all of these programs, Kate, getting parent consents, continuing to message. It has made a big difference for all of us. So thank you. Along with Jill Fidor, who are just a phenomenal team. Kate, take it away.
Thank you very much. I don't have the ability to share. Yes. So I would first like to just start by thanking the district. I, I think, oops. I didn't mean to share. I meant to present. All right.
Kate, if you click on slideshow in the top right corner next to share.
Thank you, Beth. We're a good team. So I would first like to just being in this position, when I do any speaking engagements, I always say I oversee special ed, guidance and nursing, and usually it goes in that order in normal years, but it's definitely the order of things for my focus has definitely shifted. And I'm just so thankful to have the team around me of administrators and student services. Tonight I have Naomi O'Brien here, Steve Goodwin, Ellen Shagnon, Nurse Fidor. We are definitely, I'm definitely feel very lucky to have this team around for all the things we're tackling. So tonight, the focus of this presentation is it covers a lot of ground, but it's in hopes to give information to, to folks about what we've done since the reorg right prior to my coming on here and also to just look at the programming that we have in place as well as some of the structures that we are using in order to collect data to see if what we've put into place is effective and good for all students. At the end, it really does bring it all together to talk about some of the staffing increases as part of some of these programs and these initiatives. So to start, the administrative structure has shifted a little bit since the reorg. So the my position Director of Student Services, obviously, as I said, oversees special education, guidance and nursing. When I came on three years ago, the special education element had the pre-K and elementary administrator and my role as Director of Student Services also met the need of the secondary coordinator. And we had one of our team chairs as the out of district coordinator. So we were lucky enough to scoop up Steve Goodwin and have had him on board for the last two years as one shift since the reorg happened. But this has been the administrative structure for the district. To start just with thinking about programming, we wanted to think about the most restrictive. So the students that need our most intensive programming out of district. So in the elementary level, we have very few students and many times the students have needs in which we cannot meet that we need more substantially separate, need more intensive programming potentially around autism, or we have some students in language-based programming, which we'll talk a little bit more about tonight as well. And also on the secondary level, so middle, middle and high and beyond up until age 22 for some students, we have really had, had similar needs. It can fluctuate. One thing that Mr. Goodman had mentioned and noticed was that social emotional needs, although we'll talk in a minute about some of our social emotional programming, which has grown, still may need some students who require something beyond that's more substantially separate. All our programming in district is inclusion based. So students are included in all general education classes with support. At times, some needs could, could be above beyond that. Though our programs are growing, we'll never be at a place where we don't require some out of districts programming needs. So in thinking about our high needs programming, so this is for students with a variety of disabilities that require explicit instruction around really every walk of life. A lot, some students are learning within the classroom and then have some learning that happens outside of the classroom to review the concepts that happened in the general ed setting. And then there's also lots of specialists that work with students in order to have them access curriculum. So in the elementary level, the goals program began three years ago. And it has grown through, through just the ages of students and the, the needs in which they have. So that has been something that this year we started the second classroom. And it really has the same tenants and the same values of the, the program that was in for the first few years. It's just the students are, are, are getting older and we need to expand it. We needed to expand our programming there. In the middle school next year, we are actually requesting to add a teacher for, to build up more high needs programming at that level in order to do a lot of that same supporting students within the classroom for inclusion supports and then also reviewing some concepts outside of the classroom through, through special education and through specialist services. At the moment, we do have a teacher at the high school that is doing all, all the similar pieces of, of really very individualized learning for, for these students. So language-based programming, so something that has been and I'm sure for people who have been here for, for many, many years, at the elementary level, there had been previous programming to support reading skills and to support students that may have language-based disabilities. And as the cohorts have, have shifted and we may have students who, who need this kind of programming. So language-based learning disabilities are students who need explicit skill-based instruction for literacy and a lot of times executive functioning. So that executive functioning is for planning, focus, recall, and really breaking things down. So I think anyone that has seen the language-based programming classes, teachers are really taking concepts and breaking it down for students that, that need that kind of instruction. So for, at the elementary level, we don't have a language-based learning disability program currently. We meet the needs of so many learners through explicit reading instruction and the support of special educators, but we're really hoping to have a more defined thread by adding a teacher at the elementary level. We have had middle and high school language-based programming for many years. And so that will, that will help us to define those programs as well by having the elementary program. Our social emotional programming is a, in all three buildings really is a therapeutic learning center. So there's a home base. There's a, there's a classroom where students can access in order to have supports around their emotional skill building and behavioral challenges and potentially some academic areas. At the elementary, the social emotional programming that we have is in Chicaring and it's called the center and it's been in place for, for many years. And it has an academic coordinator and it has the support of many staff of counselors, of academic support teachers and specialists. At the middle school, three years ago, through the, through the reorg, we, we looked at our social emotional programming and created the GRIP program, which stands for Growth, Resilience, Integrity, Tenacity. And it has a special education teacher and a counselor in it currently. And we also are, have grown that program to the high school. This past year was its first year and we had the school psychologists really wear a bunch of, a few hats. And so we are requesting a 1.0 counselor for the GRIP program at the high school in this coming year. Again, it is, it is a home-based model. It, it has a lot of built-in supports that students can access throughout the day. If they're, if they're needing a break, if they're needing a check-in and it's been very, very helpful for a lot of, of students. So some of our general education programming, so programs for all students. Both of these programs are around really social, emotional or mental health needs, and it could also be some medical needs that created a time out of school or a time away from learning. So at the bridge program at the high school and just this year, we've, we've had the GRIP program and we've noticed a strand that's similar to the bridge program. So we just began it this year and it, it really is for students who have had time out of learning and need some support in transitioning back into the building sometimes or into some classes and, and having that, that support through a counselor as well as the academic support that's, that's been needed. As it's been in existence at the high school for many years, we have noticed that the academic need when there is time, time missed and students returning back, that academic coordinator has been really involved in reteaching and supporting students in their return in that transition. So we are hoping to convert the academic coordinator position to a teacher position in order for that support to be even more robust. For our general education supports, we have many interventions happening at all levels. So a lot of support is in place when we look at how we are supporting students. So we've had two literacy specialists, one at Pine Hill and one at Chicaring for the past few years, and that has been really a support for staff and for students looking at how, what, what kind of things work for students as far as interventions and programs and looking at the data we're collecting through, through the work with teachers and the work with students. And we also this past year have a math specialist and a, a social emotional learning specialist across the two buildings. Really, that's been a model that's been really great to have to see Pine Hill and Chicaring students and the interventions that are in place and the consistent language and practices. So it's really a unifying and consistency building model that has been very nice. So one piece that wasn't on the presentation that I wanted to add here too, was a adjustment counselor. So one of the, so the the interventions that are created, and I think what we've all seen through just existing right now is that point people for students is very important. And one of the aspects of the data that's been collected is that we're trying to build in more connection with, with peers and with trusted people in the building. And so as those interventions have been implemented and put into place, the need for a counselor to be delivering some of those interventions that we see has been definitely clear to us. So that has, that we were hoping to, on that same level is support, consistent support spread between two buildings. We were, we were requesting an adjustment counselor across the two elementary schools to really support those interventions and to support the students and the tiered intervention. And then as it stands, we have educational assistants that work closely with the, the specialists in order to deliver a lot of the interventions that have been suggested through the data that we've collected. So those, those are in place already. And then at the middle school this year, we also did pilot a academic specialist. So we are lucky enough to have someone who is has many hats and, and many expertise and, and so Sarah Collins has been working with the, the teachers, the staff and the teams to look at the data that we're collecting through a lot of our systems and looking at interventions that teachers can be working on in the classroom as well as some ideas on shifting lessons or shifting structures and classes to support all learners. And then last but very much not least, so our nursing staff. So we have had four nurses across the district. Did you, did you want me to stop now and answer your question or do you want? So we have, so we've had four nurses. So this past year, we have piloted for part of the year, a fifth nurse, a floating nurse that has been just vital to every day. Oddly enough, the reason that we're asking for this fifth nurse has nothing to do with COVID. We are definitely seeing a need as far as Nurse Fidor's leader, nurse leader responsibilities. The caseload at the high school is such that we need some added supports there. There are many different screening tools that are being implemented now that nurses are being asked to deliver. And just since I've been here, again, I've been here through every school year. It's been a pandemic year. But coverage has always been an issue. We've always built in time and we've built in finances in order to cover for any nurse that needs to be out for anything in, and you could name, but it's really almost impossible. So we're always putting our nurses in a position where they have to be in when they, they really may need time away. So, so that is something we all feel we need. I would be remiss, I'm not asking for any of these things, but I would be remiss if I did a student services presentation and didn't talk about all the different people that support all of our students. So I just wanted to list out all the different specialists, behavior analysts, the BCBAs, educational assistants. Really, we could not have gotten through really any school day, but definitely last school year was just so vital to have the educational assistance supporting all of our students. Occupational therapists, we're lucky to have such amazing experts, physical therapists, school counselors, school psychologists, special educators and speech language pathologists. We really are very lucky to have the professionals that we have. So as we have talked about data a lot through all the pieces of special education programming, I'm still looking for a time where the data seems to be not related to something in a year that has to do with the pandemic, but we definitely are collecting more data. We have partnered with Panorama, which I think Beth and I are going to come back to another school community meeting. We don't want to load too much into one night, but that takes a look at students, how they're feeling, how connected they're feeling, how supported they're feeling and what we could be doing as a school system to support social emotional learning. We also do the Metro West survey. We also do the Metro West survey every two years. We will be collecting the data through the Equity Audit. The state also through indicators, they call them. So they ask me to let them know about how students are doing beyond graduation and some of the information. And so we're reaching out to our post-graduates to to find out how they have, how they have done, what skills they felt they were prepared to use and what things that we could be doing as a district that could better meet their needs as well. Always looking at parent and students' feedback surveys. Looking to at a lot of the the shifts that we made had to do with programming and interventions that we're putting into place have to do with meeting students' needs. So is that impacting how many students are referred for special education testing or special education? So always looking at those data points and then looking at, you know, Chief Goodwin's always thinking about this. But i- if there's a student in the out-of-district program that's looking to return or we feel like we could meet their needs, what kind of programming do we maybe need to to build and have available for all students? So to summarize, so this goes from thinking about the program expansion. I mentioned the language-based programming at Chicaring, having a 1.0 special educator, the middle school, really requiring the 1.0 special educator for the high needs program. And then social emotional supports really across every building. It's definitely the thing that we we all really think about on a daily basis, how to support all of our students in in all in all ways. And then also the bridge program that I had talked about, taking the existing person and maybe shifting to a teacher. And then, as I mentioned, there are some things that we had been doing this year that we will be adding into the budget that aren't necessarily new, but we collected some data and really do feel like it's a it's it's needed to support all of our students. That is everything. Do I call on people?
Thanks, Kate.
Um, I see Judy stand up.
Uh, Kate, thank you so much. And, you know, I I genuinely believe that if if our students' social and emotional well-being isn't taken care of, they're not learning. My que- I have two questions. The first one is to clarify exactly what you're looking for. Is it 4.5 extra FTEs? Or is it more than that? And then the second question I have is, um, you know, I live in Sherborne and and the people are generally pretty concerned about budget issues. And so I guess what would be helpful is if we could get some some do you have some data that show what, how there's been? Has there been an increase in the use of the existing services that would justify this expansion? Okay? Because I think that to me, and you know, maybe that's difficult to quantify, I don't know. But to me, I think that that's going to be, um, you know, kind of crucial in in making such a large, you know, increase in the budget.
Yes, the in the budget information in the coming meetings, so the Dover and the the Sherborne and the region. So more specifics around the actual breakdown will be coming. So I I guess the piece that I would answer with the need. So as the programs have developed and students are transitioning to the next building or or, you know, requiring different services, that's the expansion that is is required for some of the the programming. So if a student, so here's one example. We can't educate students within one program that are more than 48 months apart. So some things are just the logistics of, we have students that are needing a program that are younger, maybe kindergarten age, and we have students who are now going to be in fifth grade. So there's an expansion needs at that moment. I would say also, 2.5 of the the FTEs that we've discussed here has been counselors. And I think that we I could absolutely bring to you the caseload numbers, the what we're finding, I think, is that not only do we have students that need supports, need connections and have some skills that really need to be developed through counselors. We also have the need for people to to collect the data and to look at. So we have the survey data coming in and we have students. I think what we're feeling is the intensity of the supports that students are are needing is there. And I can find, you know, there's definitely the survey data, but also just speak to, I could speak with the counselors and get information for you as well around the SCL pieces. I think for a language-based, it's always been a question to me, how we have a middle school and a high school program, but don't have an elementary program. And so when I think about that 1.0 request, I think what we're finding is the numbers at the middle school level end up being a a higher number than you would expect for language-based programming because there's not a clearly defined program that looks at the students' needs. And there might be a student who requires reading and they may not need language-based programming. So I think there's some work that we can do at the elementary level that will actually help our middle and our high school program. Were there other requests that didn't seem? I I totally understand that this seems like a lot. I just, I definitely will have more kind of financial specifics by region and and elementary level.
Yeah, so is it 4.5 that you're looking for FTE?
So at the for without, yes, I think that.
And, yeah. Okay, and then broken down between, and how much of that is for the region?
There is 1.5 at the region, with the exception, Dawn can probably correct me, of how she's breaking up some of the other, like the nurse piece is going to be a quarter for.
Yeah, okay, and and it would be, I feel like it would be really helpful if the next time we talk about this, you can give us those nice, you know, data points as well as you can pull something together that show us that, you know, and and some of this may be pandemic-based, that the caseload has increased, okay? Or just something, something with a little bit of of, you know, data to it that show that that, I hate to say the word justify, but that helps us to feel comfortable with this would be great. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Judy. I see Maggie.
Um, just to for my own clarity, last month, we voted on what I thought was sort of the high watermark of our budget. Is that true?
Um, yes, and some of these positions were already in the budget. So you're. I've already been in and some of them we need further, um, you know, discussion about. So, um, the other thing is, yeah, go ahead.
To, I guess what I need to understand is to what extent are these asks, I mean, at least the region, going to push us past that high watermark? Number one. Number two, what, like, I need to see some, like, numerical data around this. So like, when we talk about moving an academic coordinator to a teacher, I have to assume there's some, like, is is the academic coordinator not a teacher? Like, who is that person?
Right, that's a, um, it's a, under our educational assistant contract. So you basically will be taking one of those people and converting it. So I think what our plan was to show you the big programming and then we will then be rolling out the budgets to show you the financial impact on each districts. But for the for the region, you already had the counselors already in your, um, first version of your budget. They're already in there.
Okay.
Um, and so.
I guess.
So you're not, like, these aren't all new asks that are going to be, it's like half and half. Um, so we knew in version two, we might have some additional staffing requests. But at the time, remember, we also will be able to tweak and take some retirement savings. Um, there's some other things that we, so I knew that we probably would be netting.
I I mean, under no circumstances do I ever want to be in a position to say to you, like, our most needy students, our students with social emotional issues, our students who need extra support learning, shouldn't get the help they need. Like, don't mistake this. And similar to Judy, I feel like we need a little bit more hard data background to say, like, exactly how much is this going to cost? What does this do to our budget? Are there people retiring that we're going to, you know, what's that kind of impact going to be? Um, because if we get to the point where we need to prioritize or you need to prioritize and we need to say you need to make choices, I just want to make sure that they're 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 supported by data. So like, for example, when you show show me that, like, five people out of district at the elementary school and we're learning, you know, we're introducing a specialized program, like philosophically, I totally get that. But like, what about the 30 kids at the middle school and high school? And we can't know the specific situations with them. But like, are these programs going to bring those kids back? Or are we, like, are if by not doing those programs, are we going to lose more kids? Like, like, what's the the balance there, um, is like a concern for me. And, um, I I just, I just want to make sure that as we go with these decisions, we're being fiscally responsible as well as responsible to the children, which is obviously like, I I always want to give them more. And I want to give the teachers more because I want them to have less to do because I know everybody is doing too many things.
Thanks, Maggie. Does anyone else have a question? Colleen.
Thank you. It's more of a comment in support of the expansion of the programs. I think the team is doing a phenomenal job, evidenced by our kids showing up at school and wanting to be at school, seeming to have pretty robust mental health. But there is a mental health crisis that has worsened during the pandemic. And I think it's appropriate that our program would, our programming would expand at this time. And I am reassured by what you presented tonight. So thank you.
Judy? Yeah, I just, I don't want anyone to misunderstand. I'm I'm wildly in support of this. I just want to have the data to back it up, okay? I want to be able to say to anybody, oh, my gosh, we're getting a really good bang for our buck. Here's what the data is telling us, and this is something we desperately need, okay? That's all. It's, I just, I I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that. You know, I just, I just want to be able to back it up is all, okay?
Thanks, Judy. Dennis?
Um, we had similar questions in the Sher- last Sherborne meeting. And I think a nod to Dr. Brown and the team and sort of pulling together some of that data. I kind of view the data that Maggie and Judy are talking about as sort of, what are we getting out of the investments we're making? And then also, how does it affect the budget? Those are two sets of data that are both important but serve sort of a supply and demand. So just a nod to the work that they did in Pine Hill to help support some of that, some of those questions.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment or ask a question? I'm not seeing anyone else. Thank you very, very much, Kate. We look forward to learning more and working together on this.
Thank you.
All right, we've already done our Equity Audit update, so that brings us to the policy portion.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I had just have a couple of items. One was in your packet on the Accept Education Collaborative. And it was expanding a maximum balance in their capital reserve fund. Dawn, I know you attended a meeting the other day. Would you just kind of quickly walk us through this?
If you remember correctly, not too, not too many meetings ago, you actually approved to allow the creation of the capital fund to count for accept. Since that time, they have accumulated a larger surplus than they had originally thought. And the main question the business administrators had when this was presented to us is, what made you, like, why would you not set your capital fund at where you thought it needed to be? And I think the best answer that they had was in transportation. So they thought they were going to handle transportation through a different kind of funding, fund, a enterprise fund. And they found out through DSE that they're actually not eligible to do a fund like that. So one of the main reasons why they're looking, it makes sense to put additional money into this fund is that transportation will be funded out of this. So they purchased, you know, all the vans that transport all of our member students out of district. And they're in dire need to replace that fleet. So they will be taking a big chunk of this in the coming year to actually start putting their vans on a replacement cycle. So basically, that's in the nutshell why they're asking for the 3 million, up to a $3 million increase, knowing that, um, you know, anything that's spent either way will be approved by the board of directors. They don't need you to approve the fund. They share it with you. You have 45 days in which to tell them if you don't agree. No action allows them to move forward as planned.
And and the last thing that I would like to share is messages went out to families today, parents, families and our staff members. So school messenger is how we communicate sometimes changes in COVID protocol. Could be weather-related, school closings. You now are going to have the opportunity to get a text message. I know many of you have gotten them from different companies asking you to opt in. So tomorrow, I believe, January 19th at 1:00 PM, you will receive receive a text message where you need to respond. And I know in the email that the Assistant Superintendent sent out today to everyone, it also talks about opting in to reverse 911 information for both Dover and Sherborne. You do not have to be a resident to do that, but many times when people, again, have gotten rid of their landlines and continue to have mobile devices, they're not automatically part of the reverse 911. So I just want to bring that to the community's attention. And hopefully tomorrow, when you see that happen, you will opt in so that we can text message you important informations and get messages to you in a timely manner. And that is my report this evening.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Um, all right, now we will move on to our face coverings policy. And I believe the policy subcommittee or from that group is going to set that up.
There, were you going to do the face coverings policy?
Um, I'm happy to, or you can take it away, Lynn, either way.
I was, yeah, I was planning on you doing it, so it would be great.
All right, well, um, essentially, you know, the the policy subcommittee held a meeting in order to review our face coverings policy in light of our last joint school committee meeting discussion regarding the matter. This is the meeting in December where our superintendent shared with us that the attestation form had been submitted on behalf of the high school and that DSE had given the green light for the high school to unmask at a time when the school committee, district administration and in consultation with the the boards of health saw that as an appropriate action. And so our task was to go back and look at our face coverings policy as it stood in order to determine whether any modification would be required in order for us to, uh, remove masks at some point when our boards of health recommend. We heard from the members of our boards of health, uh, the, you know, recommendations on some additional metrics in addition to the vaccination rate, um, that, uh, that DSE predicated the attestation attestation form on and, uh, you know, had a robust discussion at that time. Obviously, metrics change, conditions change. And the goal of the policy subcommittee in suggesting the revision that we have suggested here, which is in the packet everyone should have, was to still allow flexibility for that health and hygiene advisory group to advise the district and school administration on how best to proceed under the prevailing circumstances. And so you'll see here what we have. And so you'll see here, what we have done is add an additional clarification or an example of a circumstance where face coverings would not be required. And the language that we've used here is, is exceptions authorized by DSE and recommended by the Health and Hygiene Advisory and/or the Boards of Health. Again, this is simply meant to allow our district leadership and administration to continue to work with that Health and Hygiene Advisory to, to determine the appropriate time for masks to be not required at a building level. I don't know if folks have questions, concerns? Anyone? All right. So in that case, one of the things that I think we were hoping to accomplish, you'll notice that there is an action required designation for this face coverings policy clarification. Typically, when we revise or adopt a policy, we have a second read. However, it was our view that this is more of a clarification of the policy. It's a, it's certainly lays the groundwork for masks to be not required at a building level at a time that the administration, in conjunction with the Health and Hygiene Advisory and our Boards of Health deem appropriate. And so I think it was the hope, perhaps that will conditions, conditions may improve sooner than our next scheduled meeting, which right now, I don't believe we have another joint school committee meeting on the books until, is it April? And so there was a hope that we take two votes tonight. One is to waive the second read requirement so that we can go ahead and implement this new language. And then the second vote, if that passes unanimously, would be to go ahead and adopt this revision. So per our policy BGB one, the school committees may by unanimous vote decide to take action on a policy without a second read. And so that's, that's one of the things that's, that's on the table here tonight.
Sarah, for my own clarification, we need to vote by committee first to, to waive that second read. And then we need to go back and vote by committee on the policy.
That's right. Yes, it would be a unanimous vote would be required in order to waive the second read. And then assuming that takes place, then yes, the, the vote, the second vote would be on the policy revision itself.
Okay. Does anyone have further questions for Sarah or the policy committee? Thank you for your work on this.
Hi, Sarah. It's Tracy. I'm so sorry. Can you explain what the revision was again?
Sure. So we, in, in the paragraph that already exists in the face coverings policy that discusses circumstances where face coverings are not required, we've added an additional example. So not only do we have mask breaks while eating or drinking, most outdoor activities except in crowded settings. Those were all part of the policy before. We've added additional language that encapsulates exceptions authorized by DSE and recommended by the Health and Hygiene Advisory and/or the Boards of Health. In other words, circumstances such as unmasking the high school per the DSE process at a time that our Health and Hygiene Advisors tell us it is prudent to do so.
Okay, thank you. That also means though, that, does that also mean though, if this, so if the state feels we can unmask, but the town feels we can't, then we don't go by the state's rule, right?
Kathy, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, it's a little confusing. Thank you. Yeah.
So Tracy, right now, we have a mask mandate with the state through February twenty-eighth. So I think your question is if on February twenty-eighth, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education says regardless of the eighty percent threshold, you can make your own decisions. And the Health and Hygiene Advisory says to the superintendent and their team and the school committee, we would advise you to remain masked through this school year. Is, is that the question that you're asking?
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, can I just add one thing, which is this doesn't change the process in any way. It simply codifies what, what, what the state's allowing us to do anyway.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, then I would like to invite a motion from the region to waive the second reading of the face covering policy clarification.
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Maggie?
Lynn, second. Lynn Collins, second.
Lynn. Any further discussion? Okay, then I will call you as I see you on my screen. Maggie Sharon.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Judy Miller.
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn Collins.
Collins, yes.
Andy Johnson.
Andrew Johnson, yes.
Tracy Mannion.
Tracy Mannion, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you. I think Amanda, were you going to do the voting for Sherburne?
Yes, I will, Kate. So could I have a motion from Sherburne to waive the second reading of the face coverings policy?
Ellen Squant, so moved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Kida Russo, second.
Thanks, Kida. And any discussion? Okay, and, and David's not here, right? I don't see him. Okay, so we'll move on to a vote. So Dennis Quant?
Dennis Quant, yes.
Kida Russo, yes.
Thanks, Kida. And Amanda Brown, yes.
All right, Dover School Committee. Is there a motion to waive the second read requirement and take action on the face coverings policy amendment at this meeting?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Second?
Mark Healy, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Okay, great. So now we have to do this all over again to accept the actual policy. Yes. Okay, thank you, lawyers. Okay, then I would like to invite a motion from the region to accept the face covering policy.
Judy Miller, so moved.
You?
Collins, second.
Kida Lynn, further discussion? Maggie Sharon.
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Judy Miller.
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn Collins.
Collins, yes.
Andy Johnson.
Andrew Johnson, yes.
Tracy Mannion.
Tracy Mannion abstained.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you. Kida?
And do I have a motion from Sherburne to accept the face covering policy as revised?
Dennis Quant, so moved.
Thanks, Dennis, and second?
Kida Russo, second.
Thanks, Kida. I guess it's, it's all us. Any discussion? Okay, and so vote Dennis?
Dennis Quant, yes.
And Kida?
Kida Russo, yes.
And Amanda Brown, yes.
All right, is there a motion from the Dover School Committee to accept the amended face coverings policy?
Liz Grossman, so moved.
Second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll go to the vote. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the policy committee for working on that. And now on to the first read of public participation at school committee meetings.
Right, so, thank you, Kate. So this is, as Kate said, a first read, so we're not going to need to take any votes. And we're doing two reads, so we don't have to take, you know, a, a separate vote to, to waive anything. So this is just first chance to review this policy. So as Kate said, this policy is the public participation at school committee meetings. So this is a policy governing our own governance, essentially, our own operations. It, it is an existing policy that was last updated in 2012. The policy is based on the MASC model. And as you might imagine, a lot has happened since two, 2012, one of which being a lawsuit in 2018 against the Natick School Committee under First Amendment grounds, challenging their prevention of community comment regarding their operations. And so that lawsuit provided an opportunity for MASC to review its model and for school districts all to review their models. And MASC has updated the model and we are amending our policy to reflect the updates in the MCAD model. The, the changes are consistent with the way we have been practicing. So even though we had not updated our, our policy when M, when MASC updated theirs, we've been complying with the current requirements regardless. So as far as, you know, I attempted a, a red line to compare, to show the comparison. And I, I'm happy to provide one, but it is a hot mess because not only did they change content, but they reordered language and that shows up in red line and, you know, it's beyond my capabilities to, to do it. But in any event, I can provide a red line to the extent anyone is interested. So as far as substantive changes, we removed language that references, that vaguely references content. So things like, you know, you can't, that community comment, you know, cannot include defamatory language or abusive remarks or improper conduct. All of that is too vague. It's, it's, it, it, it's unconstitutional to prohibit speech based on such vague criteria. So we replaced it, or MASC replaced their, their language with more general language regarding the, you know, the right of the chair to terminate speech that is not constitutionally protected. So for example, threats and hate speech and, you know, obscenity, things like that, that are sort of clearly delineated in the law that are not protected. And then to limit, you know, authorize the, the chair to limit the scope of the, well, to limit the scope of the conversation to matters within our, within the school committee's authority. So, you know, as we've have been discussing tonight, like, you know, our scope of authority is budget, superintendent, performance, and our educational goals and, and policy, policies of the district. And so the revisions reflect these, these restrictions on speech. But, but does not restrict, does not restrict speech based on these vague concepts of inappropriateness, essentially. The revisions include, you know, sort of language around, you know, expecting conversation to be respectful. And then they've added language that we actually use in our intro to public comment, which is the discussion, is, is the comment around the fact that, that public comment is not a time for discussion or debate. Then as far as, I guess, form over substance, the, the revised policy explicitly sets a time limit to the public comment section of a meeting to fifteen minutes with the ability of the chair to extend the time. Our current policy had said that the public comment period will be determined by the chair. And so this provides more specificity, sort of a default time, and then the ability for the chair to extend that time as needed. And then it also includes or adds a provision around signing up for public comment, which is, which is just adding a little more rigor that, you know, we have wanted to add and had hoped to be able to add. And so, and, and the policy provides that sign up instructions will be provided. So, you know, depending on, you know, because Sarah and I discussed this, that, you know, the, the, the process of signing up via Zoom is going to be different from the process of signing up in person. And so it provides, the policy provides that flexibility to, you know, provide instructions as appropriate under the circumstances. And that's pretty much, yeah, that's, that's the extent of the changes. Happy to field questions, happy to just have people go back and, you know, review the policy and provide, you know, give me your questions, give us your questions over the course of the next couple of months when we have the second read, whatever people would like.
Right now for Lynn or the policy committee? Sarah?
Can I just add, Lynn, I, I, I think that this is the case, but this proposed revision that we have, it, it is literally word for word, the MASC model, is it not? This is not, you know, our take on it. It's, it's really their model policy.
Thank you. Yes. There was no, no creative license exercised here.
Thank you. Dennis?
In your research, have you heard of any other committees just taking verbatim or any other edits or updates that we, that you guys kind of considered through, through this? Or was this kind of part and parcel of how most committees are dealing with it?
I haven't done any benchmarking around how, you know, how other committees are doing it. But MASC is sort of the source, the resource for school committees across the state. And so most, I, I know that most districts use MASC as their sort of baseline policy. But I, I, I can't say that I've done any research around what other districts have done. But the other, I mean, the other thing is because this is, you know, legal compliance, constitutional compliance, I strongly suspect that most districts are going with what MASC says to do.
Makes sense. Thanks.
I know a number of you attended, I want to say it was a webinar, goodness, it seems so long ago to me. I think it was sometime in September and October because of the native case and some other confusion. And there was quite a bit of training, as you said, Lynn. I know there were legal authorities involved, and that is what they do. When something becomes a policy under consideration or in conflict, they provide, as you said, a model for districts, you know, to, to use. they provide, as you said, a model for districts, you know, to use.
Thank you. Tracy?
Great, thanks Lynn. That was a great explanation. Just out of curiosity, is the sign-up part of it, is that meant for kind of organizational purposes for the meeting? Or is it meant for the person who takes notes? Or is that kind of a public record thing? I was just curious. Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's all of the above, and just sort of, and the ability to provide some sort of order and structure around the process.
Thank you. Any other questions for tonight? If not, you can certainly send questions to your chair, and we'll get them on to Lynn and Sarah and Judy and the rest of the subcommittee. Thank you so much, all of you, for your work on this. Okay, that brings us to school committee norms and protocols. Sarah, would you like to lead us on this? Or Dennis?
Sure, I can, I can kind of give the overview. Is that all right, Sarah?
Thank you.
All right, so unlike what Lynn just took us through, this doesn't function as a formal policy per se, but more of a protocol or norm. Sent in your package last week includes sort of a revised version for folks to consider related to sort of our operating norms and protocols in terms of how the school committees choose to conduct kind of business holistically. And just sort of as a, how we got here, in a commitment that we've all made to sort of further ourselves and further our understanding and roles and responsibilities related to the committees that we serve on. A kind of education or retreat session was scheduled, multiple of them actually throughout the fall, to not only sort of surface and make sure that there was alignment on what roles and responsibilities were, but also try to sort of gain some sort of awareness and understanding of others' perspectives on what we think should be our norms and protocols in terms of how we conduct business. So these are not sort of official policies, like I mentioned, but more kind of rules to live by, if you will, and conduct our business. The process that we went through to sort of come to what's in front of you guys today, just as a refresher, was sort of group-based learning and think to kind of compare notes and share points of view. Those, those sessions were sort of orchestrated both by Kathy Smith as well as Dorothy Presser from, again, MASC, to help us sort of orient, not in terms of, not just in terms of how we conduct ourselves, but also how other school committees think about sort of similar objectives. So with all that input, Dorothy had compiled notes, and a subgroup of us, Sarah, myself, and Kate Potter, took all of those notes, distilled them down into what was included in your package for your, for your pre-read. I guess what I would say before kind of opening up to sort of comments, thoughts, perspectives, is we tried to take into account the, the operating norms that were approved back in 2019 at the region, as well as all the points of view that were shared through the two or three sessions that were, that were scheduled that I referenced earlier this fall. And we tried to reduce or eliminate overlap wherever possible, and really try to focus on, again, the primary objectives and goals of what we are here to do as school committees, and highlight how we would actually sort of go about sort of fulfilling those duties. Sarah, Kate, I'm not sure if there's any sort of salient points you think I might have missed, but if not, we can kind of open it up to folks for any questions or further clarification on how we got to where we are.
Thank you, Dennis. I don't have anything to add. That was great.
Likewise. Thank you, Dennis.
Happy to entertain questions if people have them.
I just want to say, good work. I think this keeps in the spirit of what we all worked towards when we were together, and you guys, the language is excellent. Just want to applaud you.
I agree. I thought it was amazing. I thought it was really good, and it's great to have sort of a unified, single, you know, set of norms for, for all of us. So I thought it was great. And there were like just little, you know, as I read through it, there were little things, you know, like definition of terms kind of concept that, how do, how do we want to go about discussing or addressing those? Is it intended to, are you intending for us to talk about that tonight, or just send you our comments so that we?
Well, I know the hours getting late, but I think our hope was to, to discuss that tonight. We, on the agenda, we were gonna vote on it. It's not a policy, so we don't need two readings, is my understanding. So Dennis or Sarah, correct me if you, if you thought differently, but I thought we would discuss tonight and try to make quick edits if we can.
I agree. I agree, Kate, because I think, again, we're, you know, looking at our schedule going out. This entire group, at least at present, is not on the calendar again for another couple of months. And so I think that we were hoping to be able to arrive at a, at a version of this that folks felt comfortable signing on to. But that depends on, depends on the group.
I had some that I had sent along to Kate, and Kate, I don't know if you want to talk through those, or?
Yeah, I forwarded them with your permission to Dennis and Sarah, so that we knew the questions you had.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so like one of them, you know, we, we mentioned in the fourth bullet, we talk about, you know, acting without bias. Bias can have various, people can have various perspectives on what bias is. And I know that we, we define it in our harassment policy, and I don't know if that's something we want to incorporate or discuss more, because sometimes bias might be okay. Just depends on what kind of bias we're talking about.
Speaking for myself, I mean, I thought that was an astute point. And one way we might be able to deal with it in elegant manner would be avoid bias parentheses as we've defined it within the harassment policy or something like that, just so that folks are clear. I think, listen, we want this to be clear, and I think we all commit to kind of living by these rules and being clear and sort of committing to that is important.
Yeah, I like that. And that way, we don't have to fix two things if we change the policy. So, okay.
Another way perhaps to address it is to, you know, to say, avoid bias or discrimination. But perhaps that's not as broad, Lynn, as, as you might have been thinking. I'm just trying to, again, keep this sort of salient and succinct without losing important distinctions.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's why I like Dennis's language, because in the policy, like, we define it as, you know, hatred, hostility, prejudice against a group on account of race, religion, ethnicity, you know, so it's, it's a pretty precise definition that goes beyond discrimination. So I, I kind of like the reference.
Yeah. I think that works, that works for me.
And then in the sixth bullet, it said, the superintendent, wait a minute, last bullet, the sentence says superintendent will, oh, yeah. The superintendent will ensure equal access to information. Is this intended to bind the superintendent?
Well, I think we've seen different committees do different things. I've seen some of them that have signatures kind of below all of the bullets by all of the school committee members, others that have the signatures of all school committee members and the superintendent. I mean, I take your point that we've drafted this as we, the members of the school committees. But I think that's up to us to define.
Maggie?
I guess I looked at that bullet as a reciprocal thing. Like, in exchange for, like, what is basically like an operational courtesy of that we agree not, like, all 16 of us to call Kathy and Beth all day long, we're in return asking that we all be provided equal access to information, like, on the regular basis. So I feel comfortable about it in the sense that it's binding the superintendent to the extent that we respect not, like, banging down the door all day long.
I think I find it important as a superintendent also, especially where you're so interconnected in so many things, that if somebody asks for particular research or information, I think it's fair to give that to all members. So somebody might request something, you know, through the chair, and then all members can receive that information.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't, it was literally like a, almost a grammar issue, because, well, not even grammar, but it's, we're, the whole document is that we, as the school committee, will do X, Y, and Z, and promise to do X, Y, and Z. And then there's this sentence that says, and the superintendent will do X, Y, and Z. And so I wasn't sure if we intended for, is the superintendent gonna sign this, essentially? Or, or sign on, you know, in, in theory or in actuality? Because it's, it's a school committee agreement.
I mean, we could say, or it could say, in turn, it's our expectation that the superintendent will ensure. Because it's our norm, it would be our norm only insofar as, you know, if that, you know, future superintendent, who's not Kathy, doesn't provide that information, which in cases, there have been experiences that we've had where that happens. I think that's where the norm falls apart, because people feel locked out of the information, and then they feel like they have to get it a different way.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fine. It's, it's, it's literally, is there gonna be a superintendent line at the bottom for signature? Because this document doesn't, it doesn't contemplate it throughout that it's, it's a, it's an agreement for the superintendent. I totally agree with it, and I think it makes sense, but it just, I thought it was, I don't know.
And I guess too, I, for me, I mean, these are our protocols and norms, but it's not really a legal document, or is it? It's our, it's our, our hopes.
When I was thinking about your comment, Lynn, I, I think the thing that struck me, we have the opening sort of paragraph that sort of talks about teamwork, not just among school committees, but with the administration. So I kind of felt like that brought them, brought sort of the superintendent involved. I think if I reflect back to the conversations we had with Dorothy Presser, this seemed to be something that certainly governs how we as a group of committees operates, but it was like, it doesn't work if the super isn't sort of like in the boat with you. So maybe that's sort of an implied assumption rather, and I get the wording sort of brings in obligation of the superintendent, where everything else is more obligation of the 16 or however many there are of us, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's where I had originally thought. You could probably restructure the sentence to say something to the effect of school committees will ensure the superintendent gets each member equal access, so that it changes who's doing the action, rather. It seems like that's your point.
Yeah.
What if the chair is the one ensuring that everyone have equal access? If that, if the language was changed.
And the difficulty there is that if the chair doesn't get it, then the chair can't ensure that. But I liked Maggie's solution of, you know, in turn, it's our expectation, because it phrases it again in the sense of the, you know, the school committee's expectation. And as Dennis pointed out, you know, the hook in the beginning paragraph about, you know, this is, this is the protocols and norms that we are adopting for ourselves, but also to enhance our teamwork with administration. I, I think that might do the trick.
Yeah, and I didn't process that when Maggie was saying it, but yeah. Yeah, that's good. Oh, and then there was a reference to privileged information. Do we, what's privileged?
I think executive session information, any, you know, literal legal privilege. I don't know if there are ever situations that we're asked to keep anything else confidential, but I think that's what I, I would read that to mean.
I wonder if we ought to, yeah, actually, that was my comment. What, we should probably define what we mean. Like, maybe they legally privileged, privileged under the law, or because there's privileged and then there's confidential.
Right. I guess that's the thing, like, I would want us to say both, because there are times where we get notification of things and are asked to, you know, hold the sharing of that information until a future date, you know, out of respect for personnel decisions or policies that are going to be enacted. I do think it should be part of our norms to, to honor that in addition to obviously legally privileged information.
So what can we add to expand? Parentheses, legally privileged, executive session. Well, that is legally.
Anytime there's privacy issues, directing attention to a specific student.
See, that's exactly what I'm trying to get at, is that's not privileged, that's confidential. And so I feel like it's important that, yeah, that we make it clear. And I think, yeah, what Sarah was saying, really, the only things that are privileged are executive session and attorney-client privilege. And maybe like counsel or, you know, with your, with your physician. Which, the point being, the privilege is very narrow.
Do you want to say we'll maintain the confidentiality of privileged or other confidential information?
Do you use the word sensitive?
Sensitive, or other sensitive, privileged or sensitive information? Yeah.
And confidential.
We're already talking about maintaining the confidentiality of
Okay, I don't, yeah, I, all I have is my email in front of me right now.
Yeah, although, although maintaining the confidentiality of confidential information says we're going to sort of uphold that, we're gonna, you know, we're not gonna disclose confidential information.
Well, how do folks feel about, we'll maintain the confidentiality of privileged or sensitive information?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, thanks, Dennis.
Thank you, yeah.
Lynn, did you have one more question?
Yeah. Oh, in the experiences, what was, it's the 11th bullet, so like, yeah. So the second to the last bullet was, we recognize the importance of professional growth and development and agree to participate in experiences. Was that a, did we deliberately not mention professional development, or? Or did we?
I, I think we did, right? We said we recognize the importance of professional growth and development, but we could add But we could add, you know, participate in experiences and training.
Yeah.
I think it was meant to purposefully be broad, like, um, whether these sessions were training, I don't know if it qualifies, but we wanted to kind of cast that net broad as a nod to the fact that there's a lot of stuff that has to happen to effectively carry out our respective roles. So I think we're trying to kind of do what you're at, I think, getting at, Lynn, by being broad.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe there's a better way to do it, but that was the spirit behind that bullet.
Yeah.
Very much to endorse.
Yeah, I think adding, putting in professional development instead of experiences narrows it, so I, yeah, I, I I think it should stay how it is. Ignore my last comment.
So we don't want to add like and training or anything, because we say, we do say professional growth and development, it's just that we don't talk about participating specifically in it, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I could, I could obviously go either way, but I think if 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 people think it's covered, I'm not gonna, and I, and I agree, I think it, I think it is professional growth and development.
I think that's the intent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that was it for me.
Thank you, Lynn. Anybody else have questions or thoughts on our norms? Oh, I see we've dropped down to one screen on on my screen.
I just want to make a quick comment. I've I've done a lot of trainings, I've seen a lot of norms, and I felt so good when I read these, and what I mean by good was it really reflected the work that you had done. It felt like this committee. I know a lot of it is language that you had in previous norms or some of the recommendations, but I could just see the work that went on, and I can see Dorothy Presser using this as an example, especially an example when you talk about sixteen members coming together. It clearly creates a very functional team for your superintendent, their team, and your school committee. I thought it was an excellent job.
Thank you. All right, so we should now, by committee, vote to approve school committee norms and protocols, correct? And is it just for the 2021-22 school year, or is it just in general? Now that it's 2022?
Technically, we should do it every year, because you have new members.
Yeah, okay. Okay, then I would like to invite a motion from the region to approve the school committee norms and protocols for the 2021-22 school year.
Maggie, Sharon, so moved.
Maggie?
Angie Johnson, second.
All right, Angie, thank you. Discussion. All right, roll call, roll call. Maggie, Sharon?
Maggie, Sharon, yes.
Collins?
Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Kate Potter, yes, thank you. Sarah?
All right, I'd like to invite a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the protocols and norms as discussed this evening for the 2021-2022 school year.
Mark Healy, so moved.
Thanks, Mark, second.
Colleen Burt, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez, Dan, yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
All right, thanks. Do I have a motion from Sherburne to approve the norms and protocols as discussed for the school year, the 2021-2022 school year?
Quan, so moved.
Thanks.
Kida Russo, second.
Thank you. And for the vote, Dennis Quan? Oh, sorry, any discussion, discussion, okay, Dennis Quan, um, yes. Kita Russo, yes. And Amanda Brown, yes.
Fabulous. Thank you, everyone. Um, we need to vote to approve the 2022-23 school year calendar, which feels crazy, but that's where we are right now. Um, are there any, I didn't see any major changes to our, our, our typical school calendar year, but Kathy, please correct me if I'm wrong.
There are no major changes. The one thing that I want to bring to everybody's attention, and it will probably happen year to year, and we're very excited this year to have Juneteenth, and that is going to be, and I have to look at my calendars, that is going to be, because I think it falls on a Sunday, it's going to be Monday, June 20th. I want to bring to your attention that we have already had a snow day on January 7. So our last day was supposed to be the 17th this year. At this point, because the holiday is the 20th, we're looking to having to come back the 21st. I know you do have an additional day built into your calendar, so we'll have to see how the the winter transpires at this point. So that being said, you've got, I know, I see fingers crossed, I agree. Nothing much has changed. You do have Juneteenth on Monday, the 19th of June for your 2020, 22-23 school calendar. And again, we'll just have to watch the snow days each year to see how it how it transpires. But there are no other changes.
Thank you. Amanda?
I just had a question about calendars used for sort of internal planning. While this calendar has a lot of holidays that are observed with days off, it doesn't have a lot of major holidays observed by folks in many, many religions that might impact school attendance or work and and even scheduling meetings and things. I'm thinking about Eid, for example. Is there an internal document that helps you all make sure that we're being respectful of those holidays in the spirit of being inclusive and ensuring that we can have our whole community together at various school events?
May I take that question?
Yeah, please, thanks, Beth.
So each individual school kind of keeps track of that. We don't have one universal document, however, it's been on my wish list for the last few years that we adopt a calendar that includes those dates, that even though they might not be a day off, they're recognized. And there are a few districts in our close proximity that have excellent calendars that I think we can use as exemplars. So if you were to vote tonight on the actual 181 days, then perhaps we can look at another meeting at a sample of what other holidays we can include and what the calendar might look like with those.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any other questions on the calendar?
Everyone. I wonder if we would consider observing Indigenous Peoples' Day and rather than Columbus Day?
It's also been on the wish list, and in fact, the third grade teams at both schools have thought about providing their students an opportunity to bring that forward as a petition to the school committees and the select boards in both towns. The plan was to do that this year, but unfortunately, again, we've, you know, been juggling curriculum and prioritizing. So I don't know if that's something that you want to vote on now, or if you'd like to wait to hear the children's voice. It's up to you.
Is that something that we could, if we vote the calendar in now and and have a presentation from students, we can amend?
I would think so, absolutely.
I don't think it changes your calendar. Is that correct? It just changes the designation of that holiday.
Right, good point. Okay, I would love to hear from the students personally, if they have got something cooked up. Okay. Any further questions before we vote by committee? Dennis?
We had our little security snafu in Sherburne earlier this year, which how does calendar, how does that affect calendars? Is that extra day sort of contemplative of when the sky's purple and it's raining and weird stuff's happening?
So Dennis, you're right on it. I had that note, and I thought at this point here, so it's the 23rd of November. So we had the situation in Sherburne, which we were not allowed to open the school. It was an emergency situation. Again, I think I want to get through the the weather season and then see if we probably would put in a waiver for that day. You know, for the for Pine Hill and the region for those students.
There is a process to deal with that in the context of the calendar. Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you. All right, ready to vote? I would like to, I'd like to invite a motion from the region to approve the school calendar year, the 2022-23 school calendar.
Angie Johnson, so moved. Sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
Second.
Okay, so Angie first, Lynn second.
Further discussion? All right, Maggie, Sharon?
Maggie, Sharon, yes.
Collins?
Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Kate Potter, yes. Thank you. Sarah?
Is there a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the academic calendar for the academic year 2022-2023?
Liz Grossman, so moved.
Thanks, Liz, second.
Colleen Burt, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez, Dan, yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
All right, do I have a motion from Sherburne to approve the 2022-2023 academic calendar?
Dennis Quan, so moved.
Thanks, Dennis.
Kida Russo, second.
Thanks, Kida. And any discussion? All right, so we'll move to the vote. Dennis Quan?
Dennis Quan, yes.
And Kita Russo?
Yes.
And Amanda Brown, yes.
Right, very good. We're gonna do this in under three hours. Um, that brings us to our consent agenda and the approval of the December 7th, 2021 minutes. Does anyone have a question or a correction to make on those? Sarah?
Just one small typo I noticed on the second page. After the fifth item, it says there were motions to accept the slate on candidates, I can't read slate of candidates.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, I would like to invite a motion from the region to approve the consent agenda with the edits indicated by Sarah.
Collins, so moved.
Judy Miller, second.
Judy, discussion? Okay, Maggie, Sharon?
Maggie, Sharon, yes.
Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Andy Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Kate Potter, yes. Sarah?
All right, is there a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Thanks, Mark, second.
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez, Dan, yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Okay, do I have a motion from Sherburne to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Dennis Quan, so moved.
Thanks, Kida.
Kida Russo, second.
Thanks, Kida. Discussion? All right, moving on to the vote. Dennis Quan?
Dennis Quan, yes.
And Kita Russo?
Yes.
And Amanda Brown, yes.
Fabulous. Um, thank you, everyone. There was a lot on that agenda. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard on on all of those things and to everyone for hanging on for almost three hours here. Tremendous amount of work. So I think we are allowed to to poll all at once to adjourn, is that right? Maggie's nodding.
Unanimous consent?
Is that official? Can we poll by unanimous consent? Okay. No one wants to stay on longer? Dennis does. All right.
Kate, thank you for cheering.
Good night.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
Nine eighteen.
Good night.